Okay. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, June 4th, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for the Town of New Canaan. In front of you, you have today's agenda. I would like to ask for a motion to add an agenda item down with, we'll put it down where Cheryl's going to be speaking to us in item 16, so maybe item seven, a new item 17 for an interim Human Services Director. I could get him.
Second.
Okay, it's unanimous. And then if I could get a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Steve.
Second.
Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you. And the minutes from our regular meeting on May 21st, 2024? Do I get a motion to approve those or if there's any additions?
Second.
Amy, it's unanimous. Thank you. Public comment. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address: Do you have anyone wishing to address? Okay. All right. Moving on then. We will posting postage printing from Roseanne Pani. Good morning.
I'm looking to get an approval to allocate $37,000 to Quality Data, also known as QDS, out of my fiscal '25 budget. The monies are there. I'm just looking for the approval to have these funds go to this one company, which handles all of our printing and mailing, and also is our software maintenance company that holds our data.
Sounds good to me.
No difference year over year.
Every year. Same thing. It does go up a little every year, though.
Yeah, I was gonna say, right?
Yeah.
So it's kind of like we have to kind of stay with this vendor. You can't go out to bid because it's.
Two years ago, we looked to add another vendor, and unfortunately, their pricing came in higher. I mean, we could certainly always keep looking, but there are only three vendors who provide service to the state of Connecticut. They are, what we like about this company is they certify all their employees who do their customer service. So they take the same state classes that we take in order to become tax collectors. So they know a lot of the same things that we do. So that's an advantage with them.
Okay, great. So this is our third year with this company?
No, we've been with them for about 15.
Oh, 15?
Yeah.
But you went out to bid.
Oh, Sebby and I are always looking because the assessor has to talk to the collector. The two have to interchange. So we did. We actually saw the demo of a different company. It just, when we asked for their pricing, it was much higher than what we're paying here.
And with your collection rate, that wouldn't change anything.
Yeah. Well, we have great taxpayers, that's why.
Great. Okay. So if I could get a, if there are no further questions, I get a motion to approve a request from the tax collector to enter into a contract with Quality Data Service and the amount of $37,500 for postage, printing, and service contracts associated with the July 1, 2024 tax collection start date.
Second.
It's unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay. Tiger, Wavine House renovation project.
Good morning. So, excuse me, we'll give you a little update on the elevator itself. So shortly after our last Board of Selectmen meeting, John, Bill, and I met with Alden Bailey to determine a schedule and a path forward. Sent you guys a memo late last night. So in essence, what needs to happen, as we talked about, are some probes, a probe, I should say, in the ceiling of the staircase. That can be performed from the attic downward. It's a series of drill holes that he'll create, where he'll get a two-by-two section of concrete to come out. He's going to pull it out in pieces, so nothing should fall through. And at that point in time, then he can look inside, get the measurements that he needs of the cross bracing and the bracing and the framing of the subflooring itself in order to then design the piece of the shaft that will then attach to the ceiling itself, the ceiling of the first floor or the floor of the attic.
So Tiger, when they cut that down, do they have like visual all the way down?
No. You won't be, it'll still be, you won't be able to see into the first floor. It's just that there's an interstitial space approximately two feet. So he's going to be able to see inside, right? The concern originally was drop a tool, drop a piece of concrete, you drop it through the ceiling, you know, and then we have damage. So we talked about that. And plaster repair is something that they do every day, so be repaired immediately. God forbid there was a problem. But since he's going to do a series of drill holes and then take the pieces out as they come out in smaller chunks, we're not necessarily concerned about a two-by-two piece of concrete falling through the roof or through the ceiling, if you will. So that should take four men all day due to the fact that he's all out right now on trying to finish the playhouse, if you will. We had some preliminary dates that we thought he might be able to hit in June, but given the fact that we need to open the playhouse at the latter part of June, he's looking at June 25 and June 26, weather permitting, because of recreation camps use Wavine and inclement weather. So if it's an inclement weather, if it's a rain day and they're inside, he won't be working.
It's super loud?
Yes, yeah. It's not super loud, but it's loud and disruptive, and we just, you know, don't want to have the overlap. But that's the only issue on the 25-26. And if it doesn't work 25-26, we'll find.
Is it more of a safety? I'm just trying to say, like, if he's up in the attic, he's going up into the attic.
It's a little bit of a safety thing and a little bit of a noise problem. Yeah, yeah. So we'd just rather not mix the two, if you will. But if we have nice weather on June 25-26, it won't be an issue. So then, like I said, he's got one day for four men. If there's any damage, it'll be immediately repaired. And then, once that probe is complete, he can take his measurements and help direct the final design of the elevator and then coordinate with the architect and engineer to get the shop drawings begun. So we're anticipating that the design is planned to be completed the end of June, beginning of July. And then the overall timeframe from final design to fabrication is 32 weeks, which places us in mid-February of 2025. And the thought being that he'll come back after January 1 to begin the shaft installation and then the bathroom itself. The shaft installation will take about a month. And then, at that time, he's going to take care of the bathroom itself on the first floor, the family bathroom, because we'll be removing the bathroom that's underneath the staircase. We'll have to take that out of service once we start putting the other shaft in. So those will work simultaneously.
So Tiger, is this the last piece of information the elevator designer needs to finish the design? Because it says, you know, end of June, early July. So they just need that bit of information so then they can finish their shop drawings and then go to fabrication? So is that what's holding them up on this?
Yes. I don't know, I'm getting a lot of feedback.
I know.
I don't know where that's from, trying to move stuff around.
Feedback, we didn't have a bunch of feedback.
Yeah. So yes, in answer to your question.
Is that your phone?
I don't know.
I mean, it's really.
No, it's not, it's not on the.
It's a very sharp, piercing sound. It's actually painful.
Right. It's like, it's like a hearing aid.
Yeah, it is. It is like a hearing aid.
Yeah.
This is a test. Who can hear it and who cannot?
Right. It is brutal.
Go, go, go to your audiologist.
Who did? Oh, is it better?
No.
Yeah. Do you hear it in the center? So it must be up front, but you hear it. He hears it. Mike hears it.
That was brutal.
So you have good ears. We have good ears. Everybody else is here. Wow. That's really bad.
I know.
Okay, you hear it too.
Yeah.
It's really bad.
It's really bad. You don't hear it at all?
I hear a bit of a ringing, but not awful.
Oh, my gosh. It's almost, it's like.
Let me turn mine off.
Let's shut this off. Did you hear that? Like, it's over here. It's definitely over here.
I don't know, last night there wasn't a problem.
I just switched mics. Okay.
I don't know.
Did you switch mics?
Yeah.
I just switched mics, yeah. Last night it wasn't a problem. We were using both.
Okay.
I don't know. Same setup last, exactly. The, so, much better, though.
Yeah, it's much better.
So as I mentioned, the work should take approximately a month to complete, to get the shaft ready. And then we'll have the elevator brought onto site. There's a concern with have limited space to actually have the elevator stored onsite at the time. And, but the feeling is that we can start the shaft construction early January, take about a month for that to come, and then the elevator will come in and they build the elevator inside the shaft, as we had noted before. We do have concerns slightly about the tightness of the schedule once the shaft is installed, since the schedule's allowing only about a month to a month and a half to complete the elevator prior to reopening the house. We still feel it's a doable situation, but there's limited flow, if you will, which we would like to have.
So if we have rain, if we have rain issues with the days in June that Bailey's going into.
It's only going to push us off by a day or two.
Okay.
It's not like weeks, just a day or two to try to then schedule the next availability when the house is not being utilized for an event, say, you know, rotary lunch, what have you, or rain. So, you know, we'll pray that it's dry on June 25-26.
So then you, with that, though, you also say that you'll have the, where is it? You said end of June, beginning of July, you'll have.
That's, that's the final design. He has to get in there.
So it only takes a couple of days to?
It's only going to take him a couple of days to coordinate that when once he gets the measurements in. You know, it's like a week or so to coordinate with the architect and engineer to then get what needs to happen for the bracing, and then everything can go to final design at that point. Shop drawings can be created.
Where is the elevator getting shipped from?
California.
So, and I'm just thinking in terms of building the shaft. And so as soon as we start building the shaft, it ships? Is that how it goes?
In essence, yeah. You know, we'd like to be here the moment we're finished.
Right.
So we'll have to coordinate with them on delivery times at that point.
Right. And we have like Q1, right, to get it done? Q1-25?
Q1, correct.
So is, do we know, you know, kind of what dates we're pushing up with Wavine in terms of things they have scheduled?
He's been in coordination with John.
Right. As to what's happening in Q2, the beginning of Q2? John's aware of what's happening.
Do we have like a drop dead date, John?
Yes, by the end of our.
So April 1, we hit it, right?
That's great news. Our good new wedding coordinator. Yeah, that's great.
The bulk of the work could be done in three months. And if you have to finish something, somebody has to be tweaked. You're still over the building. That's the point.
Right. Yeah, the majority of the noisy work, if you will, and what have you. And then the elevator would be sitting there, in essence. You know, if you're talking about punchless work, it's a little bit of, you know, a couple of things here and there, but nothing. And then, we could then work that in with the recreation schedule as far as the house itself, you know, and say, okay, are these dates available? And he had done that prior. Glenn had done that prior. Alden Bailey had done that prior during other work, to work around certain times, specifically the weddings.
Once you remove the bathroom, is there any compliance issues down there? You sell the family bathroom, you sell the ladies' room. I mean, in terms of access to the second floor bathrooms? I mean, can you actually hold events there?
We've been holding events there. So we're, you know, we're, the directive from the Department of Justice is that we have a certain timeframe to get it done. We're within that timeframe. So we're working towards that. And they understand that, you know, you can't build it overnight, if you will. So, and they haven't stopped us from holding events, you know. So, in essence, and the fact that we'll have the family bathroom active, that's, that would be a huge plus, if you will, because we'll have a fully compliant ADA bathroom, albeit, you know, unisex or a family bathroom on the first floor, you know, at that time. So we wouldn't be completely code compliant, but we would at least have a function, you know, accessible bathroom on the first floor.
Yeah, I mean, that would also, someday, if the elevator were in, being worked on or out of commission for a day or two, you'd stop the situation.
We'd still have that, we'd still have that as a backup. Exactly.
So when the, they're putting the shaft in for the elevators, that mean like the staircase and everything is closed off?
At that point, yeah.
And so staff and stuff will go around the?
We'd have to, we'd have to use different means to get up.
Okay.
Yeah, there's other staircases. There's the staff staircases around the outside.
Right.
And then we can coordinate with Alden Bailey as to what is considered safe and not safe at the time. You know, there's certain, there's certain aspects that we would, if, you know, things were suspended, we wouldn't want people walking around.
Sure.
But the moment that they start, you know, building the elevator from the inside, there's not much going on on the outside, if you will. Around the inside of the shaft, it's enclosed at that point.
Okay. So I have to ask you this question.
Yeah, sure.
Because I'm not a contractor. What are, what are you or Glenn most worried about? As you do those probes and you look and try and create the shaft, what are the things that could go wrong?
Find some things that are in the way that are going to have us to go back to a structural engineer to find out what to do with. You know, we've got one or two pieces of bracing that are in the way, things of that nature that we might not be able to work around.
So then that would mean a completely different location for the elevator?
No, would be different bracing stress system for the flooring itself. I think that's, that's a, I don't think that that's a, it's a possibility, but it's a remote possibility, if you will, that we wouldn't be able to work around it, if you will. So it's something that would be directly in the way of the shaft that we couldn't necessarily either attach to or get out of the way to then allow us to have the overrun itself.
So what kind of delay would something like that create?
That could be a couple of months, just to try to.
So then that's another year.
That would be, that would push us a year, yeah.
Okay.
And in the, you know, from the department side, on the justice side, we have two and a half years to complete the project.
How far into the two and a half are we?
We haven't started.
Oh, it's the day we start, because?
No, the day we sign the agreement. We haven't signed the agreement.
Oh, you haven't, okay.
The agreement for the.
For the Justice Department negotiated agreement.
So, you're right. Once we sign that, there's a timeframe in the, in the, in the document at present and the draft shows two and a half years.
That also sounds more expensive.
Yeah, it does.
It would, yeah.
So you're hoping you open it up and it's all clear?
Free space, right.
And is there any concern with the structural drawings coming from the shaft? That they're, they're going to send the dimensions and everything to the elevator manufacturer?
Correct. And then the main element, then he'll create the cab.
We just put an elevator in, in the playhouse. There's a shaft created, or there was a shaft, and then you had an elevator. And the elevator wasn't onsite when you did the shaft.
Correct.
So with this elevator, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, a specialty elevator. Do we have any concerns that the shaft size and the elevator size, we could have any issues?
At present, no. They've been, they've been tweaking that envelope and then tweaking the cab size to fit within the envelope that we have, which was inside the banister and the paneling, if you will. So we've already tweaked that design down with the elevator company to then make sure that the cab fits inside the shaft that we'll be able to construct and everything will work. So at present, no. Really, it's coming down to just how are we fastening everything up above for the shaft itself, not necessarily the cab within it.
All right. Keep going.
Okay. And then you had a, you had a question on overall costs of, so in essence, we had a, the project award was for both phases, the bathroom and the elevator bathrooms.
The downstairs bathroom? This includes the upstairs bathrooms?
The upstairs bathroom.
Okay.
Correct. So that was $2,266,750. We had $100,000, approximately $100,000 COs for a current contract amount of $2,376,469. The amount paid to date is $1,318,311.98. So.
Tiger, can you go back? Because I just don't understand. So the project, when you say COs to date, what would those COs be that were not part of the project?
So they were, there were a couple. So we had, we removed the bandstand.
Oh, that's part of the Justice Department stuff.
Right. And then we had an upgrade to the fire alarm system. We had to bypass some of the radiators for the bathrooms. And then we had some work on the flooring and then some plumbing itself. So there was a series of six change orders totaling $109,000. That left us, that leaves us a balance in our contingency, a pretty healthy balance in our contingency. And then the amount paid to date, as per this application, which is the 528 application, 528-24 is $1,318,319.8. And then I kind of broke down all the items that are associated with the elevator itself. That total was $1,482,779. That's the cost of the elevator. And the balance to complete for that is $1,352,5762. So we paid some monies out for that. One, we had a deposit with the elevator company, and we had some additional, we had some work done in the basement already for the base of the shaft and other work that was done. And that's been paid to the contractor. So we have a balance of about $1 million worth of work left to do for the elevator itself.
Hey, Tiger, can you remind me when this was approved? Like, how long? I mean, it's been a long time. And then we approved the bonding. I just can't remember.
We don't bond until afterwards.
No, no, no. We have to prove the bonding, right?
Prove the authorization.
The authorization, I get that, but.
It was pre-COVID.
Right.
You know, all the numbers were pre-COVID. And we did the original phase. We, we had three phases.
Right.
In essence, we did phase three first, so, and then phase one, phase two. So that was, excuse me, the exterior work, the western staircase, the loge work, all that.
Which is not included in this.
Which is not included.
And how much was that? Do you remember how much that was?
I'll have to look back.
I mean, just like how much, so people should know how much we, you know, it's a tough bill. You know, how much we've had to do to make it ADA compliant.
We can give you that. Those are, that information. And then, so Glenn has, in essence, tried to hold his numbers throughout COVID and then through all the increases through supply chains all the way up till now, till 2024. And we delayed him in the fact that we only let a phase at a time, if you will. So we had phase three first, then phase one and phase two. And there was time in between where we had no work slated, if you will, or no monies available. So it's been, his bid numbers are from, I believe, 2018, 2019, Bill?
And he held them?
Oh, yeah. So, yeah. Yeah. 2018, 2019, I believe. I'll get you the exact bid date.
So we, at that point, we bid. I mean, it's been a long time. We bid it up at the time.
We did it at that time, yeah. And they were $1 million lower than the next bidder at the time.
And he's still agreeing to keep the price?
Right. He's, he has some concerns about his, the cost for the elevator and the shaft, but he hasn't come back with, to us at this point with any hard number as to how much he thinks there might be.
Should we, I mean, Tiger, once.
I've asked him.
I was gonna say, once he's cut the hole in, we're kind of committed. So I would want to make sure, I would want to make sure that those prices are where they are, because once he starts doing work, it's not exactly like a time where we can say, hey, we want to go, we don't like what you just told us. We want to go somewhere else.
So you need a confirmation?
I want a confirmation.
That's fine. We can do that.
Yeah, I don't want to give, yeah.
No, I agree with that. I asked him before, so we'll just, we'll just have to reiterate.
We should get them ready. Yeah.
Yeah. It's, yeah.
There's, there's a, there's a good amount of money left in the contingency and there's a good amount of money left in the budget on both sides. You know, so we're covered kind of.
And that's because we put a 15% contingency in? Is that why?
We put a contingency, I don't know if it was 15 or 20. But, yeah. So we had to get to Missy on it.
Did, did we end up spending a lot more money on design than we initially planned on this one? Since it's been such a long iterative process?
The, we have spent some additional monies on design, but we've been holding the designer to the fact that he, they needed to give us, you know, a complete picture of what we were looking for. So in essence, while there was some additional design work associated with the elevator, we made that part of their contract, even though we fought on that a little bit, if you will.
So does this mean we have to like just re-sign off on the contract or just make sure it's okay before we?
I'm sure I don't have to re-sign the contract, but we just need to make sure there's no additions.
No issues, yeah. No outside stuff.
You're talking with Alden Bailey?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I think the point being that there's such old numbers and it's such an extended period of time.
Just want to make sure we're not, before he does any work.
That's fine.
Let's make sure that we are where we think we are.
Let him cut. Yeah, I mean, just, let him do that, you know, so we can finish the design. When you, when hopefully he can do it for them.
We'll talk to him before.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, issues, structural issues are, yeah, you're right, Will.
Yeah.
I think, I just want to make sure our prices are what we think they are before he starts. And then, you're right, anything, if we see something with the, with the.
That'll be a different story.
Yeah, then that's a different, that's a whole different discussion.
You're trying to eliminate surprises.
Right.
After that? No surprises.
Well, I mean, this.
You built a house, didn't you?
But if we, you know, if this can happen, then the building largely works for the community. I mean, in terms of ADA, I mean, this is a big step to get this done, you know, so. Are the bathrooms open?
There's, we have a little bit of work left to do in a couple of spots, and then we'll open the bathrooms. There's some, we'd like to have the flooring refinished and a couple of things in the bathrooms. in the bathrooms, like one or two punchless things. We're, I have a railing that's inch too low, things of that nature. So, once we have that done, we'll, we'll open them.
You want to form a rivet out of those bathrooms, don't you?
They're nice. They're expensive. We should use them.
They are beautiful.
Okay.
Thanks, Tiger.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. John.
Thank you.
Steve Ben.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, short, sorry for my memo. He was in an old one as a template, I, the regarding, it's not really correct. So, with, with the pool, what we're requesting is nine thousand, six hundred and fifty eight more dollars for basically landscaping, cleaning up, et cetera, at the pool. Last year, with the wet weather, we had to have Greg's come in a little bit more to take care of some of the weeds, et cetera. And then with the pool parking lot renovation, that added a little bit more, and that's why we're coming back, looking for more money.
So this was-
Sorry.
I'm confused, because he, so this is the stuff he just did?
That put us over the whole thing, yes. So, but we, we did, we did run a little bit high last year-
Okay.
At the end of the year, trying to keep the pool clean. So, dou- double combination hit us, so.
But all supported within the pool enterprise?
It's all supported and within the pool budget, yes. There's money available.
So the boxwoods and everything you show in your photos here, those are all there, those are new, or those?
We, we did have to replace a few. They are not new. In general, they're not new, but we did replace a few.
We might want to look at a different plant, talk to Greg about that. These boxwoods are, you know, boxwood light and all kinds of stuff. They're not the hardiest.
Yeah, actually, they're, they're truly not boxwoods.
Oh, good. I was like, we're playing boxwoods?
They look it. They, they look it, though, so it's, it's good. So.
All right, they do. Good.
And the stone around is, is new as well?
The stone, the stone around, it was put in, oh, now it's probably three, four years ago when that was updated. So when the island was updated, it was cleaned up and, and changed, so.
That looks great.
Yep. We like to, we like to have, we look at it this way. If, if it's inviting when you walk up and when you leave, your whole pool experience is that much better. It's like having a clean pool, clean locker rooms, try to do everything right, so.
Clean is good.
And how are we dealing with, I mean, is Greg's going to be doing weeding in here, or, you know, I'm having, like, OCD weeding as I go around?
I know you are. We did have a, we did have a couple guys come in. Next week is a key week for us.
Okay.
Once graduation happens, that gives us a huge break. So, the grass will start slowing down, and we have guys available. But right now, we're at that point where we've got about seven days' worth of mowing and five and a half days to get it done. So we can't just keep up on the mowing and then, of course, all the other stuff that's still happening, so. A little bit, we, we did the weeding, the initial weeding a little bit earlier this spring, hence we're at this point now, instead of two weeks from now, when we'd be able to handle it, so.
It's been wet.
Yeah, it's been very wet.
Yep.
Yeah. All right.
Good.
Any other questions? All right, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks and Recreation Department to increase a previously approved purchase order with Greg's Garden Center by the amount of nine thousand, six hundred and fifty eight dollars for additional landscaping at the pool.
Second?
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Joe. Tiger. Police Department. Where's Mr. Walbert?
So Mr. Walbert is in the car in Pennsylvania, so he will not be joining us.
Okay.
It's very sad.
I'm sure it is.
But he did, he did men, he, he did have one thing to mention. He was just wanted me to make sure that I, that I, that I let everyone know that, that we've been really active on making sure that we've been good neighbors during the, during the construction process. We've received very, very few complaints early on, and they're being addressed very quickly. Usually it's just one, like, random person that comes in to, to, that doesn't know the site and parks in the wrong spot. I mean, that's the extent of it, but we've been really, you know, in tune with everyone over at the EMS building, and we're taking out their driveway, and everything has gone, you know, very smoothly, and that's been very important to, to Bill and the rest of the committee, so. So just, just running, running through a quick presentation of where we are, just wanted to give credit to the Police Department Building Committee, who's been working on-
Steve, do you have a problem with the slide?
Yeah, some.
Oh, was it? Really?
I answered that.
Oh, my God. Sorry about that.
I answered Carl's Steve's.
Yeah, sorry about that. So anyway, the Police Department Building Committee has been working on this project basically since December of twenty twenty. We're not going to go through all the, the names, especially the ones that are spelled incorrectly. But, you know, Amy also was on the committee for, until she became a selectman, so she's, she's been involved since the, the beginning. So I, I always am surprised with the amount of dedication from the citizens of New Canaan. It's, it's amazing. They're a very dedicated committee, so.
From, from Board of Finance, isn't Nick on as well?
Has he been officially added? I just didn't want to, I didn't officially add him.
He's amazing, though. He is so good.
If, okay.
If he officially adds, I don't know.
I'll add Nick.
That would be from the Board of Finance, I think, as a, as a, but anyway, I just, I just wanted to shout him out, because he's doing a lot of work.
I'll make sure he's on the next slide for the next update. So, so people are familiar with the nineteen twenty six building. The shell remained. Just kind of give you a really quick overview. You can see the two, the, the rear addition, there's the Sally Port, and there's a purpose-built addition that gives all the very specific functions of the police department. You know, the, the front path is a nineteen twenty six school. We're kind of, still kind of married to the bones of, of that, but it was been repurposed, the, the, which is mostly the, kind of, the administrative offices and things that work in that building. And the addition is really for the very specific things that the police station functions have, the, the, the actual cells, the detention areas, the Sally Port, the, the, the rooms that kind of basically where they deploy from every day. So it's very specific, purposely built police station, so. The timeline, the design started on this particular design in twenty two, and right now, we are projected to be finished in spring of twenty twenty five. We originally were at Thanksgiving of twenty twenty five, so we're about four, trending about, you know, four to five months ahead of schedule. Quick overview on progress, just going back, you know, there's been a lot, a lot to do. You know, we had to move the prime radio site, the department, we built a temporary police building at thirty nine Locust, Turner Construction started the demolition in twenty twenty three. In February twenty four, we took the rear of the building down, and in March, basically, we, we've worked on getting all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing in the walls and above the ceiling, and we're pretty far along to the fact that we're actually sheet rocking on the third floor of the main building. So, and there's even paint up in, in some of the, in some of the areas, and we're continuing to go down to the, you know, working from the top down in the, in that building, and the second floor is almost catching up to that one as well, where we'll be, you know, putting in, on the first and second coat of paint in just the next few weeks. The window installation is basically almost a hundred percent complete.
So the new windows?
So, so, so the new windows are all in. We'll have some replacement sashes that'll, that'll, that'll come in, but the, the windows will be in, building will be watertight. It, it is essentially now.
Yeah, and, and the building hasn't had any water issues with all these, these rain issues, which is good.
Right, right. They left out some of the sheet rock around the, the, the windows when they weren't fully installed, so that if, if anything did blow in, there wouldn't be any issues, and we didn't have any issues. So, it was, we were, we were fortunate.
You have the, the drainage in front of the building. Completely redid, right?
Yeah, yeah. I actually have a slide on that.
Okay.
That, the, the little look. So the foundations in the rear are being completed, and, and the next milestone that everyone's going to be looking for is the steel erection, which will be the, be completed by the end of July. So, we'll go to some photos. So this is our dedicated superintendent, Scott, who's holding up the column because we needed to remove the, the footing and foundation, so that it would, it would basically not have a giant footing in the middle of our hallway. So we had to do a little extra work on that column line. It wasn't, it wasn't known to, that we were going to have to do that. And if you go to the next slide, he actually wasn't holding it up, but we had the shoring, the shoring was in, in place, and that was a, that was quite a bit of effort to, doesn't look like much, but we're holding up the back, that back column line with temporary shoring. So it was very important that we get that done and out of the way. It happened fairly quickly, over the course of three weeks, and it allows us to, to complete the foundation work and then, and then get the steel underway, which is the next milestone.
So to all the interns here in the room that are going into engineering, this is, like, super important, those two braces. I mean, it's holding up the entire building.
Yeah.
It's amazing. Study hard. We need people who can figure this stuff out.
And, and that's what we did with Scott. We actually made him stand underneath it to make sure it would work, you know? You're responsible for this. You stand underneath it.
I wish, I wish.
So, so that's just another shot. You can see, you can see in the photo, if you don't see it that well, but you can see that the foundation was removed from underneath it. That was the whole point of this exercise. And in the next photo, you can see that they actually had the foundation built. So the next photo, you have, here we go. So the footing's installed, and you'll see a pier being constructed underneath the, underneath the column, and that has since been formed, poured, and then grouted in, and we're removing, we're in the process of removing the shoring now.
So is the concrete at the right strength now?
So the concrete made this, made the strength. It made the three thousand PSI strength, which was what we were waiting for, and we were able to grout it in, and now we're able, as, you know, the schedule allows, just to, to basically rest the building back down on the permanent footing. When I say rest, it's already kind of, it's already preloaded. It should only go, I think it's somewhere around like an eighth, an eighth of an inch, and it'll be, and it'll be loaded up again. And you'll also see there's another, this was basically became a double column, I'm sorry, double foundation for two columns, because there's another column that's going to live there as part of the back building. So this is the, the waterproofing detail that was on the front of the building. As, as the years, there was a lot of concern throughout the years. There's been historic leaks in the, in the building, and this, the lower level got wet constantly, so there was a big concern by, of the committee, and obviously, the Department of Public Works. So this was the prescription for the fix. So the good news is that when we dug down, we found, we found, you know, kind of a smoking gun. You know, there was old, there was old waterproofing, there was areas that, that it obviously would have leaked. There was also the, the way the earth was pitched back to the building wasn't really a good design to have it pitched back, so all the, the rainwater was invited back into the building, so we fixed that as well. And we put new drainage at the bottom of this board. It's a drainage board. It's a waterproofing, a drainage board, a protection board, and then at the bottom of that is a, it's a pipe to convey anything that gets there. So nothing's, you know, knock on wood, nothing's getting through there anymore. So that was a, that was an item that-
See, those used to be windows. They used to be exposed, that lower level. If you see the original building, you would walk up to the building, and the lower level had all windows. And when they did the renovation, they didn't do it right. So, and, and so now, that, that's why there was that water issue, so.
Joe, somewhere on the left side of the building, there's the original, the original stone that was dedicated. Is that still there on the left side?
Yeah.
Nineteen twenty six, it's in the cornerstone. Is that, is that stone engraved? Yeah. So will, will that stone be exposed after we're finished? We'll be able to see that as well.
The, I, I don't think we're, I don't think we're burying any of them. All right, so I'd have to check, but I don't, I don't think so.
Yeah.
I think it, I thought it was at the water table level, but I couldn't mistake.
It's right there.
So anyway, for, for the, so for the next slide, you can see some of the progress. This is the Sally, the Sally Port Foundation, and the GL cells. You can see the GL cells in the, the bottommost section of the slide, and you can, and you can see off in the distance, that'll become the, the footprint of the rear of the building, the rear building addition. So you can see that, as soon as we get the shoring out of the way, we can complete that work.
You know, you get a sense of the front, when you drive by on South Avenue, residents really can't see how big a job this is, but when you look at that picture, that's a major construction site.
Yeah.
There's a lot going on there.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't think people realize how god awful, awful the back of their building was. The extension they took down and are putting up, it was, it was awful.
You can actually go to the next slide, you can see how awful it is. So, you can see the existing building is, as you, you can see it's very, it was painted, it was spalling, it's, you know, most of the, the worst part is gone now, but there's still some attention that's going to be needed. And then this is just the, the pouring of the, the Sally Port. So this is, this is where we were last, last week. Going to the next slide, our new windows, just thought it was a nice picture. And then you go to the next slide, the front of the building with all the new windows installed, and then you can see all the, you know, dental work that was up top is, is, was removed, and new sheathing installed, because there was, needed some repairs to the existing stuff. And then it's getting ready for the AZAC trim, which is a low maintenance trim that'll go up there, so we don't have to spend money in ten years on fixing it all.
Yeah, so I see all the wood up top.
So much.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So just progress on the third floor. This is the chief's office. I just like to throw this in all the time, because it's, it's bigger than Tiger's by, you know, a lot, so it's, uh-
Two times.
It's two times? I didn't, I didn't, I didn't notice that.
At least.
I didn't notice that. Um, so going on to the budget, I, I just put a slide of the budget. This was the original budget that's been presented multiple times. This is as it was after we set the GMP. So there, this is unchanged in the last few months, so I won't go into that unless someone wants me to dive into it at all. But it's basically the still, it's just how we got to the, the twenty nine million dollar project and the one point nine million dollar contingency. And then a contingency update, so far, we have spent six hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars in contingency, which is about two point two percent of the overall project cost, so I think we're doing really well on the, on the contingency. We have a healthy amount of contingency left. We have one point two six left in contingency, and the project's about thirty five percent complete, and we're only about thirty three percent with our contingency, and they're not linear. They don't, they don't track. I mean, usually you spend, you know, fifty to seventy five percent of your contingency in, in the first, you know, thirty percent. So I, I think we're really healthy in our, in our contingency right now.
Yeah. I mean, like, the contingency is a lot for surprises, so a lot of the stuff that would trigger surprises behind us.
Right. We're, we're fully, we're, we're fully demolished. We're almost out of, you know, we're out of the ground in most locations. We have some site utilities to put in, so we could still obviously run into stuff when we're putting in the site utilities, but the, the building's been largely exposed, and most of our risks are known. We do have one challenge coming out of the mechanical room, where we're going to have to do some rework of existing structural components in order to get all the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing and HVAC through the wall in the area of the, of the gym.
Yeah, that bottom level that you showed me, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
You have so much piping coming through, just can't, Swiss cheese out of that area, so you've got to do that, still maintain structural integrity.
Yeah, typically you go through, right underneath the, under the bond beam, but the way it's constructed is a little different. That was something that we discovered. It was, it was constructed differently than what's, what's traditional.
Yeah, we knew going in with the concrete walls that are in there, just like waving these, impossible.
Yeah, there's, and, and then it's terracotta cells. It's just a different, it's just a, it's an older construction, so it's, takes a little more consideration when you're poking through it.
How long before you think you'll have a solution to that?
Um, so we had a meeting yesterday at ten thirty. It's going to be a combination of rerouting mechanical equipment, or, I'm sorry, piping and distribution, and going under, underground for some of the electrical stuff to go across the hallway, because the hallway's kind of the choke point, to get the distribution out through the rest of the building. And then there'll be some areas where there, there'll be some soffits, little bit lower in corners, so that we can get everything through. So that has been direction, it's been given from the design team, and now Turner is putting it into the, the BIM models to just make sure everything, everything works in this, in this computerated drafting model that they have. So it'll be, it'll be, within a couple of weeks, we'll know that expense. It's a long way to answer that. And then I didn't have anything else, but I, I had attached the, the PCO logs, so if you wanted to go through any of the details. But I wasn't going to go through any of those details here. We go through them every two, you know, every two weeks at the building committee meeting, and everything's been, it's been being signed off through the committee, so it's fully vetted out at those, at those meetings. So the second and fourth Thursday of, of the month, and anyone's welcome to join, and I have put you guys on the distribution list, so you will all, you will all get the, the monthly reports.
Joe, there was one item, though, on this, that said forced entry sash window replacement. Does somebody try to break in, or is that just a terminology?
Oh, no, so that, so the, so, so there was, um-
That's why I asked about the new windows.
So there's, so there's, um, I won't go into it in much detail, because it's, it's a security item, but we're improving, we're improving the, the windows from what was, But we're improving, we're improving the, the windows from what was, was purchased.
So this is going forward, not, not dealing with an issue now?
Yeah, this is, this is going forward.
I thought, I'm confused, Joe. I thought that, that it was a mistake in what was shipped, and we were shipped the wrong windows. That's, it was a design?
No, it was a, no, it was, it was a design, it was, it was specified to be a certain window. It was bought to be a lesser window. It was approved to be a lesser window through the, through the shop, shop drawing and middle process, so...
So it was originally designed the way we have it now, but for some reason, in the middle of the project, somebody purchased the wrong, ordered the wrong windows.
The, the Turner procurement folks missed a option on the windows that should have been purchased.
So that contingency or that overage, would that come out of their contingency?
It comes out of their contingency. It comes out of their contingency, and we're only paying, we're, we're not paying any penalty. We're just paying exactly what we would have paid for the, for the, if it was bought correctly the first time. And they're, and they're covering all the labor costs and all that stuff.
Okay, so that's all on Turner?
All on Turner. So that's it, is there any questions?
That's great, it's coming along. Whenever, whenever Bill Walbert says, it's on time, maybe even, and on budget.
And if it does come in, there are savings in terms of just the, the onsite Turner costs. I mean, we have shorter months of that, we don't have to pay it. I mean, there's other, not just, not tapping the contingency, but we just don't have to... What's the term that you use for just the, the onsite costs of having the construction?
The general conditions?
Yeah, so, you know, we could have slight savings in general conditions.
We also save on, on the rental, because we can change the rental. So, you know, it, it, it costs us about, you know, $40,000 a month to be over at 39 Locusts, so that's a...
It helps.
It helps.
And, and the committee's pretty tough on looking at the contingency. And it, it's not like, oh, we have this money, let's spend it. That is definitely not the approach.
Absolutely.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Anne and Chris.
Good morning.
Morning.
We always end up following the cool ones. I said, we always end up following the cool ones. We never bring anything interesting.
Well, OpenGov is interesting.
Actually, OpenGov is awesome. It's like process improvement, you know?
Yes, it's made a big deal. So this is their service contract for the year. Most of our service contracts go from July to June, but this one, because of the timeline of when we implemented it, started April 1st. So we're looking to put a purchase order in place, but we're splitting it up between the years. We're gonna have, I can, nine months in prepaid and three months in this year. So we need to do the PO now to be able to get it paid, and, and we'll split the cost between the years.
Maybe, maybe just for the public, what, what does OpenGov do?
It's the permitting process across the board. We had, it was a very manual process where residents had to go from department to department, health department, building downstairs, fire, sometimes tax, depending on what departments, and it has to go through the process. It's now automated that process, where they can do it from home to push all their items through each department, putting up the documents, whatever they need. Payment processing through, it goes through there as well. So it's, it's enabled it to be a much more efficient, timely process for residents and contractors going through. It's, it's made a big difference, big difference.
Good. They see where their, their building projects are, are in the process.
Process, yep.
Where they're, where they're, where there might be, they can track it, they pay online, so there's less cash, you know?
Yep, there's a lot of accountability.
On so many levels, it's just...
It's really automated the whole process. It's nice to know too, that if it's, if it's a left building and it's in wetlands, where you don't have to call building and, oh, well, let me find that, it's over here, it's all right there.
Yeah, it's, and it's made a difference.
I've talked to a couple contractors who think it's great. The whole process has been streamlined, that too, time obviously.
Yeah, I gotta kudos to Jen for finding all this years, a couple of years back. And a lot of other towns and cities have gone with it, so it's just gonna grow.
Perfect. Alright, so there aren't any other questions? If I could get a motion to approve a request from the information technology department for a purchase order with OpenGov land used permitting software and the amount of $33,407 to be utilized by several departments.
Second.
It's unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Tiger.
Good morning again. So this next item. It's just me, it wasn't him.
No, it's, oh yeah, you're right.
Yeah. Something's going on. The, so this is to, for flagging services for this year, to continue our agreement with precise traffic control. We estimate about $50,000 for traffic control for our various construction projects, road paving, sidewalks, tree trimming, things of that nature. We are almost exclusively using flaggers now versus our, our officers. Our officers are quite busy with eversource work in the downtown area and other work that eversource is doing throughout town, or the utilities, I should say. But we have, we utilize them sparingly depending upon issues that we have at the time. You know, if I've got an elderly resident that might necessarily need services at the time that we're paving, I'd rather have someone there that has a radio, that in case the ambulance shows up, the officer's there, he can respond, things of that nature. So if we're, we're aware of certain situations, we, we accommodate at that point. But we've been primarily, almost exclusively, using flaggers.
So what is this, what are we paying per hour with these flaggers?
Oh, it's a, there is this twofold rate system, so depending upon if it's prevailing wage or not. So non-provailing wage, we're paying somewhere on the order of $25 an hour. Sorry, I don't have it in front of me. And then we're paying approximately 47 an hour if it's a prevailing wage job. That's a requirement.
What's the, is this 20, is the rest of 2024, or is this for 2025?
This is for 2024, this is for this year itself. I had a little bit left over from last year, about $11,000, I believe, and we've exhausted that.
So this is getting us to the end of this fiscal year?
This will get us to the end of the fiscal year and hopefully have a little bit left over. It's something that we track, you know, daily, if you will, our flagger usage. And then we have a, an allowance per contract. We know whether the contractor's utilizing too much, if you will. But, so we're, but we're on, we're on track to, like I said, last year, we did the exact same approval and we had several thousand dollars left over.
Great. If there are no further questions, if I could get an approval of a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with precise traffic control and the amount of $50,000 to provide flagging services for town projects.
Second.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Blanket purchase orders.
So this next is from the highway department. There's two blankets, one for, two blanket increases, I should say, one for ONG for asphalt. We originally wrote the memo with $5,000. We'd like to have that be a $10,000 increase, so the overall PO would be $25,000. And then for Chadwick-Barras for sweeper parts, an additional $2,000 to make that $7,000 for sweep, for some sweeper parts, brushes, brooms, things of that nature.
Can you, just sorry, go back to ONG, so the total PO now will be what?
25 instead of the 20.
Okay, so this memo says...
Yeah, it said five, we, yeah, yesterday we were speaking, I needed to go to 10 instead of, instead of the, instead of the 5,000.
So is this, sorry, just because there's a motion here?
Yeah.
So this asphalt has five on my, on my agenda?
Correct, you'd have to change the agenda to be 10.
So this needs to be 10?
Right. Right.
Okay, I should have done that at the beginning, but...
Sorry about that.
Alright. So that's, so the memo on this, so now we'll be at 25 for ONG total for the year in the PO.
Correct.
And seven for Chadwick-Barras. Okay. Alright, do you have any questions, anyone? Okay. If not, then I'll have a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to increase previously approved purchase orders as follows. ONG Industries for asphalt, $10,000, and Chadwick-Barras sweeper parts, $2,000.
Second.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Capo.
Capo. So I'm, I'm told we have a baseball player in the, in the, in the stands. Quinn?
Hey, Quinn.
Quentin, there it is. So this is for you, Quentin.
But are you a senior?
Yeah.
That's not for you, man, sorry. Alumni game.
Exactly, alumni game, exactly, sorry. So this is for additional design services for the Capo baseball field project. It's with McCord Engineering for $11,600. In essence, what we're asking them to do is change our drainage design from a 25-year storm to a 100-year storm. We're trying to be proactive, we're gonna be changing, DPW Engineering is gonna be changing our requirements. It used to be a 25-year storm that everyone had to design to. That'll be changing as of July 1. And even though the application went in and we're underneath the old regulation, we feel that the town should, you know, lead in that example. And, and since we have concerns with, from residents downstream, we want to increase that design from the 25-year storm to the 100-year storm. And then, so that, this money's, is related to exactly doing that, doing those calculations as well as some additional work for sanitary sewer flows from the new stadium, routing it through, it routes through back through the high school. So we did some testing around Dunning at the time that we were looking at Dunning, and this is adding a couple of manholes, which is actually good data for us to have for future reference for our sanitary sewer system. So in essence, it's an $11,600 addition to McCord's contract.
So Tiger, is this coming out of the NCAF side, their money?
That I haven't spoken to Mike Benevento about yet. You know, they have, they have, they have paid for all the design, they've paid for all the design at present.
So we need to be...
I can certainly have them, yeah.
Yeah, where the money, I agree.
We need to make sure where the money's coming from.
The only reason I bring it up is because the, and they, they haven't balked at anything, is, is the fact that we're asking for this change. The town is asking for the change. So that's why I wanted to bring it to the selectmen and say, we have monies available, or I can just say that the NCAF has to pay. We can hold, you know, if you want. If you'd like to, if you'd like to get them to say yes, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, I think, we need to know who's paying for it. I don't wanna approve something I don't know who's paying for it.
No, that's fine. Like I said, it's, since it's a town ask, I wanted to bring it to you, you know, bring it and ask your opinion, but...
Well, it's, it's a town ask for something that we're requiring of everybody going forward.
We will be, that's correct, that's what July...
It's not really, I mean, it's a requirement.
You're right, that's fine.
It's a requirement.
Do, do we have any update on, I mean, because my understanding of this project is until NCAF has the match in the bank, we don't go forward with any of it. Do we, do we know where they are on their raise with this? And I believe, crackman from wrong, they're, it's on New Canaan Baseball, they profiled the project. It's not on the NCAF website, so if you wanna go to see what they're talking about and what they're asking in terms of raising and, but do we know what success they've had yet in that? Because I know we need the money to, from them before we commit our money, and I don't know when we're trying to get shovel in the ground and stuff like that. So do we have an update on that?
I, I don't have a specific update as to how well they're doing on the fundraising, but in our discussions last night, we had to, we were before Inland Wetlands last night, so Mike Benevento was with me at the time. And he was not, he was claiming that they were doing quite well, if you will, that they're on track.
Is there, is there a date we're thinking shovel in the ground goes on this?
We would like to be, we would like to be shoveling the ground sometime in late July, early August.
Okay, I just didn't realize the timing.
In order to make that timeframe, we have to, we, Inland Wetlands did not make a decision last night, rightly so. They'll be, we'll be going back to them in two weeks, yesterday, so that'll be the 17th, I believe. And then we'll be going to P&amp;Z later that month for the first view. P&amp;Z can't approve until Wetlands approves. We're hoping Wetland will give us our approval on the 17th. And then P&amp;Z can then act on their portion of the special permit. And then we're in the process of finalizing the, the bidding documents and then speaking to several of the contractors that we would like to utilize for the turf. So we'll have a complete package, hopefully in late July, in July, for a late July, early August start.
And, and Tiger, do you know how long it's gonna take to build, build out everything?
Four, five months.
Four, five months.
We're gonna be, that's, we're, we're underneath the gun to finish before the end of the construction season.
Right.
This year, so November, December of this year, with the goal of actually opening the field for next year's season.
Right.
I didn't watch that Inland Wetlands meeting yet, but water's gonna pitch, will it pitch toward the pool or back toward Water Tower, Water Tower Field?
The, the water, we're, we're, we're keeping the water where it was already, where it was originally going. So a portion of the field will head to the west, a portion of the field heads to the east. A small portion of the field heads to the east, so there's, that would be towards the turf fields or towards the, the store, park storage building.
And there's enough capacity there to handle that? That's, that's already gonna be...
Yes, that's, yeah, and the, the overall thought is by going to this additional measure, we have actually three measures, if you will, for stormwater. One is the fact that the, the field will hold the, the first flush, and then there's a drainage mat in the bottom of the field. And then we're going to a bioretention swale, which will help us with, that was part of a, an approval that Inland Wetlands made as a requirement for St. Luke's for their turf fields. So we put a bioretention swale, and then we're going to detention, your typical cult tech system, your, your detention system at that point. And that, that cult tech system will be sized for a 100-year storm. So at present, it'll likely increase by about 50% of its size from the 25-year storm to the 100-year storm. And the engineer last night was speaking of the fact that we'd be able to hold, the 25-year storm was holding 6.41 inches, now it'll be able to hold nine inches of rain coming out. So we're thinking that the first flush will not even be noticed by any downstream residents. And then as the storm increases, eventually, the overflow will go exactly where it's going now, if you will, which is a catch basin that's along the edge of Lapham Road, Pool Road, that goes underneath the, underneath the Pool Road itself, and then leads into a hillside wetland that's along that embankment, the Pool Road down to Lapham Road.
So given that this is gonna be turf, is there more runoff on turf than there is on grass?
Well, the, the grass itself, at present, I don't, I don't wanna speak for the engineer, but speaking from what he said last night, the grass itself, one, it's a, this was a built area, okay? So the ground is very compact.
Okay, so it doesn't soak it up?
The runoff isn't as, while there is more runoff coming off the turf, we'll be retaining more because of the detention systems that we have. So we'll be, we'll be better than what we have. But comparatively speaking, from the grass that we have now to the turf, it's gonna come off the turf faster than it comes off the grass. But in the entire system, it'll be slower. I guess is the best way to describe it to you.
It's important though, water's important.
Alright, so we'll...
Yeah, we'll come back in, in two weeks. So the, the next one is the entry sidewalk for the playhouse itself. This is in essence the first five, 10 feet coming off of the playhouse. So five feet coming off the front edge of the playhouse, and then I say five to 10 feet because from the doors, since the doors are recessed. So come out that first stretch and then come out past where the white portions of the building come out, so you know where the earth garden was and where the, where the bar will be, bay windows are, thank you. So, and this, this will bring concrete sidewalk out to that level, which will give us a nice entry in, and then we'll be working on the bump out area later, once the construction is done. But this will allow us to, to allow the entry, tie the, tie the sidewalk in with the door frames and have it all be one continuous unit. It's in essence from the walkway coming in, and then the bar area to the left, if you're facing the playhouse, to the alley, the blind alley, right on the alley, the opposite side in front of the, in front of...
You know, in LA, it's tree lined. Every time I hear that now, I get it over.
Only going by what they tell me. It's named, it has an arch, it has an arch, it says LA on it, so the, the... The, the area in front of the earth garden itself, the, the way it's being, we're looking at making that into a planted area, so that won't get this treatment. And then the sidewalk will be a little bit further away. But this is the, just basically to tie in the playhouse itself with the sidewalk around.
When is this gonna get done?
He'll be, he's got a break in his schedule, I spoke to Bill about it yesterday, this is Peter Lonnie. The Glen Alden Bailey should be out of the way within the next couple of days. And then Peter Lonnie has a break in his schedule between Bristow and the old Stanford Road sidewalks. It'll come out right away.
So before it opens?
Absolutely. This is one of the requirements that we have, so yes, is the reason why we're bringing it to you now.
So Tiger, that, that area you talk about, obviously, this is the, the, you know, only a few feet. When you talk about the area that goes out toward the street, that is, that's not gonna be completed by the 27th?
That will not be, no. There's too much activity going on in the area, and I, and I, I could go there and do it, but then I'm gonna gum up everything that they're doing, right? So they utilize that for two days, bringing the, the seats in. I can't, I can't have, there's just too many people working in it. So we're gonna try, that's one of the reasons why this, try to make it so that adjacent to the theater is, is, you know, stable and firm and a nice surface to stand on. And then we'll address the rest of it temporarily when the theater opens, and then we'll come forward and, and finish the, finish the brick, the bump out, and then do the brick.
How long will that take, you think?
To do that work?
I'm just thinking about like the initial photo op, it's still gonna have sort of a...
We were hoping to put red carpets down everywhere, so you wouldn't see it, if you will. We'd be covering over that area with red carpets.
Looks all over them. Optics.
We're trying very hard to make it so that you won't see anything, you know, while we're still working on the outside.
And during construction, is that broken up at all out there, or it's still safe?
It's still safe, yeah, it's, it's a little gravelly, we're gonna come in and sweep it out, clean it out, and then make sure the transitions are safe for everyone, because they're anticipating large crowds for the opening, for the opening weekend and the openings that are happening. So we're, we're talking through that at present, where to put the queue for people, you know, safely, things of that nature. The thought is to put them down the, the live alley, if you will. Call it the live alley and the blind alley, but down the live alley, we'll put the queue down the live alley.
So I guess the question is, when will you be able to come back and finish that? And how long will it take? Because we've already ripped up the whole area there for so long. Now we're gonna go back in again, after everybody thinks it's finished, we're gonna go back in and rip it up again.
To finish the, to finish the granite coming across is a couple of days' work in order to get the grades right. And then it's a couple of days to do the brick. Last time we did it for the other businesses, it was a business a day. So once the granite was in, they came in with a large crew, if you will, you know, seven to nine men, and did the business in one day. We said, okay, move your, move everything away, one day. We said, okay, move your, move everything away, one day, move everything back, good. So that's, that's what we're anticipating is the exact type of schedule.
You thinking August?
After the sidewalk sale, I think, yeah, I'm, I'm trying not to cram it in between the two.
Yeah.
We'll see exactly what everyone's timeframe is.
If you've got other work on Elm Street, that'll be happening too.
Eversource is still present for the next couple of months, yes, and there'll be probably some additional work that's going on, just on Elm Street itself. You know, there's, there's other people moving in, there's other businesses that are renovating.
But our parking, the, the parking and all that work that we were talking about doing, that was, weren't we doing that at the end during August, or were?
That will, will finalize the design, go out to bid, and then, and then bring that to you. The thought is, yeah, exactly in August, August, September.
I'm just, the reason I ask these questions, I'm waiting for the day.
When it's all done?
That we can drive down Elm Street and not have something going on.
So am I.
Ever Source, don't, like, Ever Source just keeps coming back.
Right.
Although, to be fair, they have been good partners recently. We asked them to notify us early so we could notify the business owners about when they're going to be and where they're going to be, and they have been, so far, very good about pre-notification about where and when.
They're giving us a weekly schedule on the Thursday before, so we can notify, that was, that was Deanna's initiative. We met with Eversource, she asked for that. They said every Thursday afternoon, they'll, they text me their, their schedule for the week, for both construction and crews, if you will, the, the wire crews, and then we give that out to everyone, specifically Laura Bud, she can let the downtown people.
The only problem is, we have other businesses maybe going in that are going to need.
Upsters.
What, no, water lines, which, I mean, I'm just like, I can't, I keep saying, I mean, it's great, new businesses are awesome, it's just, but it's digging up the roads every time, so it's, that's why I say don't get too excited about it.
Let's get all the water lines started.
Yeah.
So, so this was $7,750. We added a 15% contingency or $1,000, I should say, for $8,750 in funds are currently available.
Any questions?
Yep.
If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Peter Lonnie Inc. in the amount of $7,750 plus a contingency of $1,000 for a total cost of $8,750. The project entails a removal of existing installation of new concrete sidewalks around the frontage of the playhouse, including the entryway.
Second.
It's unanimous.
Thanks.
All right, Tiger and Bill.
Yeah, this, this, Bill's, Bill's busy.
He was here, I saw him.
He's busy. Yeah, so this is a small contract with MAC Fire for $2,425 with a $485 contingency for $2,910 related to the Town Hall Annex HVAC and Boiler Project. In essence, we've got to move a sprinkler branch line out of the way to get everything out of the way and then put it back in once it's done. So it's basically just coordinating, getting that material, getting this, that, serve the sprinkler line out of the way, so we can go do the work, and then we'll put it back. And monies are available.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right. If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with MAC Fire Protection in the amount of $2,425 plus a contingency of $485 for a total of $2,910. The project entails a removal and reinstallation of the sprinkler branch line at the Town Hall Annex.
Second.
It's unanimous, thank you.
All right, so every year with.
These are our future engineers.
These are our future engineers. So this is Cooper, this is Kalen. Kalen is studying, she's studying computer engineering and electrical engineering at Northeastern, and Cooper's going to Clemson and studying mechanical.
Morning.
Morning. So we always ask them to do, this year, it's very short timeframe of, you know, time that we had with the interns, we always ask them to do at least one small project, it's bring to you, and then actually have to present. So I'm going to let them present exactly what they're proposing today, and then we'll have to answer questions. All right, so this year.
Do you need the mic? Does he need the mic?
See if that works.
I don't know.
Well, maybe he's like, yeah, okay.
All right, maybe. All right, so this year, we're redoing 29 roads. They're either getting hot in place asphalt recycling or traditional just paving or the micro thin overlay. So we redo roads every around 10 years, and at the same time, signs also have a lifespan of around 10 years, because there's little like mi- micro tiny retro reflective crystals inside the surface of the sign that allows you to see it at night, because the light bounces off your, off the sign from your headlights. So since we redo, oh, it's making the noise.
Just keep going.
All right, sure. Since we redo the roads every 10 years, and the signs also have a lifespan of 10 years, we like to replace the signs at the same time we do the roads. So Kalen and I, last week, drove around to all 29 roads, or sections of roads that are being redone, and we identified 109 signs that need to, that need to be replaced because they're at the end of their lifespan. Yeah, so we identified 109 signs, and with an estimate, a ballpark of around $50 per sign, we estimated around $5,500 to replace these 109 signs. So we're requesting a, an enter into a contract with East Coast Signs not to exceed $5,500.
He did a good job.
Kind of said everything.
That's okay. So in essence, we weren't able to get quote from East Coast at present, before the, before the signs were asking to be able to enter into a contract. When you get the quote, you can sign the quote for not, not more than.
So I can add that, I'll add that into the, into the motion, not to exceed.
Yeah, it was on the memo, not to exceed, maybe not on the motion, but on the memo, it's not to exceed $500. That way, we just couldn't, we just didn't have enough time, I apologize.
Nope, that's all right.
The shortened timeframe that we had, by the time they finished the analysis.
No, this is their last week.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Yeah, they're gone Friday, so.
In your analysis, how many signs are there? How many road signs are there?
Oh, we've got well over 2,000.
2,000.
Yeah, we had 177 in the first go, right? When you guys went out, there was 177, and then we looked and saw that some of them had been replaced already. Were newer, and some didn't, aren't, aren't under the regulation, the manual on UFO traffic control devices, the street signs, the street name signs aren't under that regulation, if you will. The rest of them are, you have to have, you have to have a, you have to have a program for replacement, if you will. And so our program is on like expectancy of the sign. So it's a seven, 10-year lifespan of the sign, 10 years, it fits, you know, so once we pave the road, do the sign.
So is it, the sign include the post, or is it just the sign?
The sign and the post, yeah.
For 50 bucks?
That's a pretty good deal with the post.
Right?
The post.
Yeah, and the installation you guys do, so.
Highway Department does, yeah. If we can reutilize the post, if we can reutilize the post, we will, if they're really rusted and nasty, then we'll go with it. You know, it's a new paved road, we'll go with a new sign and a new sign.
That's a pretty good deal.
Don't tell them that.
Okay, sorry.
That's right.
It's very expensive.
It comes up once, it comes up once in a while during the year, like, people like to decorate those signs for different occasions, whether it's holidays, whether, that's, do they have to check with you if they want to do that?
They do that, they do that anyway. As long as it doesn't affect the sign and that, whether or not you can see the sign, we don't have a problem. I have pictures of Garland.
Yeah, yeah. It's nice, it's nice.
That must be in the south of the Y neighborhood. I have never seen that.
In essence, we did go out bid this, at one point in time, I bid it to see how much it would be, and it was, the average was between $225 and $250 a sign for the contractor to do it, for our guys to do it, it's just the material, and that was, that was us buying the material, that was just the labor cost. So we said, this is a lot cheaper for us to do it, so most of us men do it.
That's great.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, winning house really helps you.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I was shocked if they remember how much it was just for someone to come up, and I hand them the sign and they put it in the ground, if you will, right? So when we did the analysis, it was much, much, much more cost effective for our men to do it.
That's great.
Those non-reflective, the old school signs, how many of those are left? Are there any?
Not many. It's called an engineering grade, right? So it's not a prison, and we don't have many of those left.
Like, you'd have to go to find a real small dead end somewhere, maybe?
Yes, yeah, and there are some, like in this analysis, too, we were able to take, take some signs out of, that are no longer part of the METCD. So there's signs like children at play is no longer a sign, an approved sign, and then we found someone had a slow your roll.
Slow your roll.
Slow your roll? Up to the stop sign?
Somebody put a sign up there, slow your roll. So they came back with that, I said, they looked, they're like, that's not part of that, I was like, no, that's not part of the manual, slow your roll. But, so we did find one, that was, you know, somebody put out the sign, it was turtleback.
Interesting. Great work.
So I, since this is your last Board of Selectmen meeting, I want to thank you both for all you've done for the town and, and encourage you to study hard again, because as you've seen through your time with Tiger and being in these meetings, what you are looking to do is super important, and we need, we need smart people like you guys to, to make sure that our buildings stay up and everything's working and, you know, so thank you for, you know, spending a little time here, and I hope it encourages you to really give back to wherever you end up.
Thank you.
Living, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with East Coast Signs for sign replacement not to exceed $5,500.
Second.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right, Ann.
I'm coming before you for the Board of Ed technology lease that they come every year. It's $800,000, we'll be putting out to bid this week. They, you should have the listing of, did you get the listing of the equipment? It's in the budget for 2025, which is when the, for spending, and we need to go through authorization through this board first to be able to go out and make the, well, to go out and bid first and then make the purchases. So I'm looking for approval of that.
Is this what I eventually sign every time I get those leases?
It's it, yeah, that's it.
Sometimes they're $69.
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, she gets a lot.
It's good, you're tight.
And you, instead of reading the whole authorization, you could say, as stated in the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, that's a long, yes. No one wants to hear my voice that long. Okay. Any questions?
Yep.
All right, if not, if I could get a motion to approve a resolution that is in your tablets, authorizing the execution of a lease purchase agreement to acquire computer equipment for the Board of Education.
Second.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, Cheryl. So the first one is Joe.
Oh, yeah. Good morning.
Good morning.
We are here to present Joseph Semantili. He will be temporary part-time working with John. We had a worker go out on workers comp, and we have got a lot of work that is building up. So we put an ad out, we received 31 applications, we set up interviews for six, and one individual showed. So we, we did check references, they're great. He does own property, he has taken care of property, clean property, has great basic repair skills, and he'll probably be with us for maybe a month.
I mean, if you have any tech issues, sounds like you should be going.
Right.
Wow. I mean, I'm like, my goodness, very impressive, you know, Acrystal have to tag, tag along if he needs any help. Okay, do you have any questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Human Resources Department to hire Joe Semantili as a part-time recreation custodian.
Second.
Second.
It's unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you, was easy.
And. And we have our next item.
Next is, I would like to recommend Marcella Rand to come in as an.
Come on up.
She was hoping we would, she wouldn't have.
Ah, sorry, no such luck, no such luck.
So our current Human Services Director gave us a two-week notice, so we have been lucky enough to have Marcy with us since 2020. She is our senior outreach worker, she is a licensed master's in social work from Columbia and has been doing a terrific job with the town, so we would like to move her into interim position as of June 14.
Any questions?
She's doing a fantastic job. All we hear is good things.
Thank you, thank you. We're thrilled to have you here.
Great to have a deep bench.
Yeah, yes.
It's great.
No, it's exciting, thank you. Okay. If there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Human Resources Director to appoint Marcella Rand as interim Human Services Director, although she goes by Marcy.
Second.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, thank you.
See, we're not that bad.
Okay, Tree Warden.
We should just give Tiger permission.
Yeah, all right, so thank you again. So Bob went out for his latest bid, May 31, and we received two bids, actually were quite tight, they were only 400, sorry, $728 separating the, the two, Mill River from Olmsted Tree. There's approximately 12 locations of note, there's in Bristow Park, there'll be two Norways, a dying red maple and a dogwood and a dead ash being replaced off the entrance, being removed off the entrance of 106. We just put in a brand-new oak tree there, that was a sustainable, New Canaan placed that tree, was a, a number of organizations in town, then it donated money, and then the highway department planted that. And it's to replace the existing oak that was outside that died, you know, that collapsed, so we put a, a similar one inside, and there's a couple of trees that, some, some Norway maples that are invasive and a couple of other trees in the area that open up a view shed for, or light shed for.